Good morning, we'll call a meeting to order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of the day's agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard. You're not approving of approved payment of bills and vouchers.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. First item, Clay County Economic Update and West Central Initiative Annual Update. Greg Wagner and Tom McSparren. Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board for taking the time to hear us out today. My name's Greg Wagner, I'm the Economic Development Planner with West Central Initiative, and I'm joined with by Tom McSparren, who is the Vice President of Development for West Central Initiative. I'm gonna go first here and give you a little update on what we see as kind of the status of the economy for Clay County, and then Tom is gonna provide you an update of WCI's activities over the last year. So instead of me reading and giving you a two pages of text, we've changed it up a little bit this year, and our communications department created this infographic, so I just wanna kinda go over this and review the infographic with you. It gives you a snapshot of highlights of what
Yep. Does it hear?
Gives you a snapshot of kinda what's going on, both in Clay County and the region, with some highlights. If you want greater detail, we do develop a document that gets updated every year, it's called the SEDS, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. That is online, and you can find the website on that, on the right-hand corner there in the blue, or you can just give me a call or email, and I can answer any specific questions as well. But just to kinda, to go over what we're seeing, you know, based on the estimates for population for 2014, the region has grown since 2010 by just under 2 percent, and Clay County has seen the most growth by, in the last four years, by growing, adding 4 percent. So there's been significant population growth. Clay County is one of those counties in the region and the state that sees consistent growth, and kinda leads the region in, in population growth as well. Clay County is also one of the most diverse counties in the region. We're seeing that most of the new people that come to the region, if you look at that group, one in every seven is from a minority group. About 8 percent of the Clay County population is from a minority group, primarily from Latino and Hispanic origin. And by 2035, they're projecting that one in 10 people in the entire region will be from a minority group, so we will see some definite changes to our demographic makeup of the population. Another highlight that we hear a lot about is the baby boomer, age 65 and over, they're calling it the age wave now, and our graphic designer kindly designed a graph with waves here, and that just shows the, the population forecast of those over 65 out until 2045, Clay County being the dark gray, and the region being the lighter gray. This county is, and has been and will be traditionally kind of a younger community, a younger county, and that's primarily based on the, the college, all the colleges, and then also the, kinda the draw of the, the younger folks to the FM area. There's, there's definitely a kinda younger vibe, and so it's the metropolitan area, and that's where young people wanna be. Some trends that we're seeing in economic development that apply to both Clay County, the region, and the state, you know, you can talk even the greater Fargo-Moorhead metro area, spilling over into North Dakota, need for a larger workforce. The rising cost of energy is going to start impacting how business is done, and then tied into that need for a larger workforce is also the, the need for increased wages, and the ability, availability and affordability of housing for that workforce. Those three really tie in together. The industries with the most need that we're seeing into the future will be in the trade, transportation, and utilities industry, professional business services, education and health services, and leisure and hospitality. And you can see on the, in the orange box, the average weekly wages, so these are the top, pretty much the top five industries in Clay County, and each dollar amount is the average weekly wage in that industry for the county. The number one industry that employs the most people in the county is educational services, again tied to both the public and private high schools and elementary schools in, in the county, and also the, the colleges that are here too. So it's definitely a, a large employer at 3,500 employees countywide, with $834 a week is the average weekly wage, just for kind of a, a mark on that, $760 per week is the average weekly wage for educational services in the region, so we're approaching that $75 more a week average wage for, for just the county here. Number two employer at the top is healthcare and social assistance. The, the average weekly wage is a little bit lower than, than the region wage in that industry. Manufacturing is the sixth largest employer in the county. Number five isn't on here, but that was public administration, and those, the employee numbers for those are pretty close together, but we like to talk about manufacturing, because they say that for every one manufacturing job, there's one to five other new jobs created in, in the, the general workforce labor shed. So manufacturing does play a big role, and the, the average weekly wage for manufacturing is significantly higher than the region-wide. The regional average weekly wage for manufacturing is $885, so just some highlights there. Clay County, in the scheme of the average weekly wage for all industries, I'm looking at the, the orange bar graph titled wages, you can see that our region, Economic Development Region Four, is falling in and forth at $700 a week, and Clay County is very close to that at $693, so we pulled out all the, the metro, the greater Minnesota metro regions like Duluth area, Rochester, and St. Cloud out of there, 'cause you know, when the populations of those three cities alone, almost total, are total regional population, it really skews the numbers when looking at comparing regions for, for wages. And then unemployment, you can see kinda the ebb and flow of how unemployment has taken the course through time since 1996 on this chart, and at the height of the recession. In these, in previous visits to the county board, I've highlighted that, you know, we were pretty insulated from a lot of the harsher impacts, as far as workforce goes, of the recession. You can see the region in green on this chart. For 2014, we're at some of the lowest we've ever seen unemployment for the region at, at 3.9 percent, and just to compare that to what we're seeing in Clay, for 2014, Clay County unemployment was at 3.3 percent, so over a half a percent difference lower than, than what we saw at the region. The most recent monthly numbers for unemployment, Clay County was at 3 percent unemployment. So they say traditional, you know, normal unemployment is between 4 and 5 percent, and so, you know, the, the workforce problem, or challenges are definitely very acute here in finding people to fill the available jobs, because there's just, everybody's working, basically. And then finally, poverty. We've seen poverty rise and fall annually, both for the region and, and in our individual counties. Clay County is at 12.4 percent for 2013 poverty rate, and that was up a full percentage from 2012, and that just, that really ties into the wages, and you know, if you go back up to that average weekly wage, accommodation and, and food services is the number four employer at $285 a week average weekly wage, and then retail trade is the number three employer, $455, so a lot of people not making a whole lot of money in their jobs really impacts that, that poverty rate. So that's kinda ties into why we see one of the trends is the need to increase wages. So I think I've rambled on enough, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer any now, or if you think of some in the future. My card is in the folder, and my contact information's also on the side there, so unless there's questions, I wanna thank you for your time.
Thanks, Greg. Any questions?
I'd just like to say, this is, for someone like me, this is very easy to understand.
Good. Good, thank you.
Any other questions for Greg? Thanks, Greg.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, I appreciate too the chance to come out and give you this update from West Central. I'll answer any question if you may, and I'm done. The West Central Minnesota Initiative Fund is a public foundation dedicated to enriching the quality of life in West Central Minnesota. That's the first line in the first annual report of WCI, which outlined the activities from 1986 to 87, and now, 29 years later, that sentence still accurately describes our vision of using ideas and resources to help people and communities create a better tomorrow, and examples of those you'll find in the packets that I've given you in the annual report and some of the other information. And while the goals remain the same as they were then, some of the methods and approaches to meet those goals have changed, and why? Because the needs of our nine-county region have changed, and I'd like to take just a couple minutes to tell you about a few of the similarities and a few of the changes. Economic development has always been a main focus of our staff. Our gap loan program has been a part of WCI since 1986. That first year, nine loans were approved for a total of $217,000. Last year, that number grew to 28 loans totaling nearly $2 million, and during that time, 9,600 jobs have been created as a result of WCI business development staff working with your local banks and helping local entrepreneurs start or expand their businesses. Through our partnership with Enterprise Minnesota, nearly 700 workers received training through our Workforce 2020 Grant Program last year. In the words of one business owner, "We learned to view our operation from a different viewpoint to achieve better flow and efficiency," and as workers' skill sets increase as a result of this training, so do their wages as they move along their career ladder. Children's well-being has always been a part of our focus, and for the last 12 years, the Early Childhood Initiative has been at the forefront of that focus. Through the 10 initiatives in our region, topics such as child development, parent education, early childhood dental network, infant childcare, literacy, and many more are addressed. WCI's Family Economic Success Program embraces the premise that children do well when families do well, and families do better when they live in supportive communities. Focusing on asset building, early childhood, childcare, and jobs, careers, and employability, the FES programs help families break down barriers that might otherwise keep them out of the workforce. One example, excuse me, one example of how our programs have adapted to meet the needs of our region is our Safe Routes to Schools Program. With the assistance of WCI staff, five communities have completed their plans and received infrastructure grants last year to implement those plans, and we're working with five additional communities to complete their plans, and will identify more who wish to develop their plans over the next five years. While component funds were not a part of that first annual report, WCI's role as a regional community foundation has grown to become a very important part of our mission. Following our focus of promoting philanthropy, WCI now manages nearly 75 funds which impact every county and nearly every community. Working with WCI development staff, those funds raised nearly $3.5 million last year and awarded almost $2.8 million in grants. Those grants help, have made an impact on the local schools, libraries, hospitals, humane societies, and a wide variety of nonprofit organizations all across the region. We know that our past successes, our new programs, and the impact that we continue to have in our region would not be possible without the support we receive from the counties, cities, corporations, and individuals who share in our vision and our mission. That support allows us to continue to address the critical needs in economic and community development, and as you begin your budgeting process for fiscal 2016, we ask that you consider, consider continuing your support with the request that is also included in your packet. And I would also remind you that the gifts to the unrestricted endowment fund of WCI are matched dollar-for-dollar by the McKnight Foundation, essentially doubling those gifts. We thank you for the confidence that you have shown through your past support, and we are proud to call Clay County a partner in each of these efforts. As always, our pledge to you is to continue the careful stewardship of each gift and every dollar. And with that, I will thank you again for your time, and try to answer any questions if you may.
Questions?
So there's some samples of people in Clay County that used to, you said the loans that have been given out and stuff, or is that type of information available, or don't we give that out?
I really can't, I mean, we have been active, there have been some loans made in Clay County this past year, some of them utilizing the Clay County Loan Fund in conjunction with some other loan funds that we also have, and with WCI loan funds, but it's kinda one of those deals where, if you asked me did so-and-so, were you participating in this project?
Yeah, I guess I'm not.
You know, I could say yes or no, but
I don't want any names, I don't want any names, I was just one of these Clay County people, are they benefiting from this, or?
Yes, yeah. There's, there's several projects that we're working on through our gap loan program in Clay County right now.
Okay, good.
Barnesville just received a state grant for the Safe Routes to School program, we did the State Safe Routes to School Plan for Barnesville, and they received a grant to actually implement some of that, the plan for a trail. Dilworth has been active with us too, and some projects, so Moorhead, it's, it's, there's definitely a lot of work that's being done here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. No, on the, do we wait for budget issues and their requests?
Yeah, I would think so, Mr. Chair, if you'd wanna wait and approve the budget. Tom has submitted the $15,000 request, which is $7,000 to the county loan fund, and I guess, and $8,000 for West Central Initiative, and census, because we have a new commissioner here, I think we should touch on that county loan fund too, that is set up, and that, that has a balance of right around $200,000, I believe.
I believe so, yeah.
And there's
Not a lot of requests. Those are for businesses, or gap loans for businesses outside of the city of Moorhead.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And with that, the only other thing I would add is, you'll see in the packet that we now have a new CEO at West Central, and we've extended invitation, we've got an open house on Thursday from 1:00 to 2:30, if you'd like to come down to the offices and meet Brad and the rest of the staff, we'd welcome to come down now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, come on up. Approved courthouse HVAC pipe replacement project.
If you guys remember, I think it was a couple of months ago, we had discussed capital improvement lists and priorities for the buildings, and basically, at that time, we met with the buildings committee, and we had identified this tower loop project as a, a critical need, something that needed to be done right away, so what we did is we met with three different contractors to, to give us some quotes on this, Grant Mechanical, Robert Gibb, and Trane, and what we did, just a little history on it, the HVAC system, there's a pipe that runs from the basement all the way up to the tower of the roof, and right now, that's carbon steel, and it's rotted away, and our plan is to replace it with PVC Schedule 80, and also replace a couple of main pumps that are down there. So what we did is we, once we got this project together, we then took it back to the buildings committee, last week discussed it in fine detail, and as far as the prices go, Grant's Mechanical came in at $44,698, Robert Gibb came in at $47,900, and Trane came in at We would like to go with Grant's Mechanical, the lowest bid at $44,698, and we discussed and agreed that we would take these funds out of Fund 13. Questions?
Questions for Joe?
Mr. Chair, this has been through committee, and Joe did a very good job presenting it, and I so move the request.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing, no, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Pretty easy on you today.
Yeah, no, it'll be about a five-week project, starting in September, so we, we'll make it a smooth transition, hopefully, so. It's, the weather's kinda cool around that time, so good timing, project, so.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, it's public hearing, I suppose we have to wait till 9 o'clock, uh, let's see here. Brian, you wanna do the 9:15 demolition of hardship property?
Sure.
I did.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, and other commissioners. What you have before you is something I've reported on in the past. There was a parcel of, of property to the south of Moorhead, I guess we can refer to it as a vote property, because we've referred to it before, the address is there, it's, it's down probably about 12 miles, I suppose, something, something like that, and what happened is, this individual applied to the diversion authority for a hardship buyout. There was some issues that the person wanted to liquidate the property, and the property was in limbo because of the diversion issue, and the diversion authority set up a hardship committee to rever, review these applications, and they're certainly not buying out properties in advance, but if there's a situation that exists, that the individual needs medical or, or other emergency issues that exist, they will consider that for a buyout, and this was one of those properties. It was bought out, I believe, in 13, I think, and then last year, the house was deemed salvageable, and it was sold on auction, and the home was moved off the property, but the demolition was not taken care of at that time, because it was sold with some of the other homes that were done in, in, on the North Dakota side. So, and you folks are aware of the budget issues and the EIS with the DNR in Minnesota and the federal court case, and the diversion has made the decision through the federal courts to quit spending money in regards to new programs, and we've had a lot of discussion in regards to this was not a new program, and the diversion should have taken care of this at the time, but they feel they cannot spend the money right now, so we've gotten some complaints from neighbors, and we have a concern ourselves. Some of you have a concern in regard to the basement being open at this residence and the debris that's around on this residence, so this has been brought to, you don't see a signed letter on your copy, but this was approved at the diversion authority for a recommendation to be paid, and I can't remember the title of it now, but the Dakota, after the diversion, the authority approves a, a, a project, and if it involves funding, then it has to go to the Dakota Review, and this was approved for up to $40,000 for demolition, but they are asking Clay County to handle the demolition and obtain the quotes and, and go ahead and do the project. So they have approved paying for this, but they've asked us to work through us to do it. So I'm here today to ask your approval to move forward on this project, and with the same motion, if you decide to allow us to do this, the same motion to then approve us to go ahead and, and get, obtain a quote and move ahead with this.
Thank you. Questions from Brian on this issue?
Commissioner Campbell and I did sit in on one of those, it wasn't necessarily a committee, but we did sit in on a meeting where this was discussed, and I think we have differing opinions on this. I, I don't feel that this, the money should have spent, been spent in Minnesota in the first place, but it has been spent, and because they moved the house off in the fall, this was, our planning commission was aware that this needed to be done last fall, I think the discussions this spring happened well before that injunction was even issued, and my thought is, this is their property, I do not feel that Clay County should take the liability and spend our money to clean it up, it's, it's their piece of property, so I cannot support us spending the money to, to send our staff out there to clean it up.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we will, we will disagree on this. The fact of the matter is, is the diversion authority has been scrutinized now for not abiding by the Minnesota DNR's request to hold all action until the EIS is completed. And with that being said, we have a health hazard out there that is the responsibility of Clay County to make sure is fixed. The diversion authority voted to reimburse us for all costs, but they feel their hands are tied based on the actions and the letters coming from the Minnesota DNR, that they should not be taking any action on anything at the present time. That does not solve the problem that Clay County has with the health hazard in place. Even if they had voted not to fund this, it would be our responsibility to clean it up and bill them, and, 'cause the diversion authority is the owner of the property, and so they are ultimately responsible to pay for the cleanup of it. But you can just imagine, right now, the, the scrutiny that would come from the JPA from Wilkun and Richland County, and the MINDAC Coalition, if the diversion authority were to spend more money on having something physically done if the diversion authority were to spend more money on having something physically done in Clay County right now. They would be up in arms about it.
William?
If we go ahead and okay this, will we eventually be reimbursed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kenny?
My other concern is if we're talking about it being such a dire health issue, we were aware of this in November. And so why are we giving the diversion authority special privileges by not doing anything and not encouraging them to continue cleaning it up and just sitting on our hands until May? And all of a sudden, they have an excuse to say, "We have an injunction. We don't need to do anything." I see what you're saying, but I also say, "This should have been done a long time ago," and I'm not...
It was, it wasn't brought to my attention about a health hazard until about a month and a half ago. I don't know when, when homes were moved off.
It was last, last fall. Mr. Chair, the diversion is not a foreign government. We are one-sixth of the diversion. So when we talk about someone else, we have to realize that we are part of that diversion. So we hold one-sixth of the responsibility for the liability as well.
So then we should have been actively encouraging them to clean it up, to where it's not a public issue.
We probably should have, yeah.
But, and, and what, if you don't know what's there or what the problem is, it's hard to act on it. I hadn't heard one word about this being a health hazard until a month and a half ago.
Yeah.
And it was after that, Jenny, that you and I, we did meet with this group to try to figure out how we could resolve it.
Our planning commission was out, or not planning commission, but Magnussen was out there and took photos of it being an open basement that was not fenced off with debris everywhere. I'm under the understanding that it was, it's also a hay property adjacent that we, that's leased out, and they were unable to hay it this spring because of all the debris. It's something that our administration was aware of.
Well, it sounds like something we should have taken care of earlier, but the point is, we need to deal with it now. So one of the board's wishes.
I, I would move the request to have that property cleaned up and billed back to the diversion authority by, and of course, that would include to obtain the quotes to have it done.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion?
Would you call the roll, please?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vicki, you want to call the roll?
Campbell?
Aye.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ayersaw?
Yes.
Motion?
No.
Boylan?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, right on time, nine o'clock, public hearing. You have a motion?
I move to open hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Good morning.
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 We are here in conjunction with six separate ordinances for our county. And these ordinances did exist prior to today, and that is where the, your packet starts. Exhibit A that I've attached, the first page ordinance two thousand and ten dash three, was the first time this board passed these six ordinances. And you can see them set out in Part One. Food code, lodging establishments code, children's camp code, public swimming pool code. E is manufactured home parks and recreational camping code, and F, safe drinking water code. You can see by the text of these ordinances that what they really did is they just adopted the state codes and put those into our ordinance structure. So there, there's not much meat to these ordinances, but they, they did the trick at that time. In two thousand and eleven, Exhibit B that I have, the second page, we came back, ordinance two thousand and eleven dash three, and made a few additions to each one of those six separate subparts. And they're just the second paragraph that's attached to each one of those subparts, talking about having prior approval, licensing approval before any work was commenced. So that was just an amendment made to those six parts. So that has existed since two thousand and eleven in that form. And it's my understanding, Kathy can, can speak more completely about the Department of Health and the audit that's currently happening. And in conjunction with that audit, the state would like us to beef up those ordinances so they're not just adopting the state rules. They want us to kind of have more text and more, more meat to our ordinances. So the next pages that are attached, go through one by one. Food protection, that's three pages, front and back. Then lodging establishment is three pages, front and back. Mobile home park is three pages, front and back. Youth camp, probably all our, that's five pages. Public swimming pool, again, is five pages. And then finally, the safe, it's called public water supply now. It was, it would be what the safe drinking water ordinances that we already have. So you can see that these six substantially expanded what we had previous. They're much more detailed. They provide purposes and objectives. They go through authority and who is kind of in charge of these programs and the inspection scenarios and how all these things are handled, much more in detail. But they do not deviate from the state rules. They merely just re-recite them. So they're, they're in line with the state rules. They're just set out separate ordinances for a county. And the action that we are looking for today is to, the two thousand and ten ordinance, Exhibit A, was repealed by the two thousand and eleven ordinance. So today, we are looking to repeal two thousand and eleven dash three, Part One, which is these six codes that are set out, and then re-adopt these six as separate Clay County ordinances. We haven't had our ordinances re-codified for, I think it's since two thousand and two. We're looking to do that in the future. So hopefully, when that happens, these will all be set out as separate ordinances. I think that's beneficial in the respect that if we ever want to make a change to say just one of them, the food protection, we don't have to go through and amend or re-adopt the whole six. We'll make them separate. We'll title them separate. There'll be the Clay County Food Protection Ordinance, the Clay County Mobile Home Park Ordinance, Clay County Public Drinking Water Ordinance. And it will just, it'll really clean up our code and, and make things much clearer. So Kathy can talk about that, that process, about the audit and any other questions. And Bruce, maybe is the guy to talk, if you have questions about the meat of these ordinances and how the, the rules will work or the processes will work.
Currently, right now, we have another review. The state officials are here to review our delegated program for food pool and lodging. And so they're spending the week doing a review, looking through our policies and procedures, looking through, and they'll be looking at the, the ordinances as well. They did not have a process for ongoing reviews. We previously had a review, number twenty-one. And they did not have a process for continuing reviews. So we, across the state, have requested that. And the other opportunity we had for a review is Otter Tail's board is wanting to become a delegated agreement along with Clay and Wilkens. So in order to take Otter Tail along with our delegated agreement, we needed another review for that process. Otter Tail will incorporate everything that we have as far as policies and procedures. So this week is the review. We'll get the results in, in a while. And, and then we'll move forward, and Otter Tail can move forward with adopting a delegated agreement with Clay and Wilkens.
Questions?
So with this review that's ongoing right now, could that shed some more light on what we currently have as ordinance or policy that make us want to reconsider what we have proposed here?
This is actually, the, the state has already reviewed all of our policies. This is the template they requested that we use. So they are fully aware that this is the, this is what it's going to look like.
And I may have misunderstood you, Jenny, but I, I thought that you said in your opening comments that the state wanted us to expand on language more so than what they have. Did I understand you correctly?
No, more, more so than what we had previously, consistent with what they have.
Okay.
Yeah. If you wanted to look at the Minnesota rules, you know, Minnesota food code, they're all set out, of course, very lengthy Minnesota rules. And they wanted a version of that in a county ordinance, rather than just a statement that says, "We hereby adopt the state food code."
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I, I, I asked this, I asked, we're, we're looking at breaking this down into several different ordinances now, which I think is fine. I, I, it does become easier to deal with one aspect down the road as opposed to the entire ordinance. But during this public hearing process, I don't see anybody here in the audience that is here with any concern over it. But for example, I'm just going to pick out the mobile home park and recreational camping area ordinance. Were those, how were those people notified of this public hearing and the ability to see what's being proposed? Was, was there a notification given to them?
Well, it was, it was published as per state law, published in the, in the county paper. It was posted on the bulletin board. And I think maybe the most important thing to, to keep in mind is that this doesn't change what the rules were before.
Okay.
It just sets them out in more detail. The, the old ordinance said, "We hereby adopt the state's mobile home and recreational camping area ordinance." It's the same rules.
So there, so there's no, no new restrictions?
There's no substantive changes at all. It's just...
No change, the things are done separately?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. The state just, I, you know, in an effort to have things very clear and, you know, have all the i's dotted and t's crossed, let's put it all into text so the members of the public can open up Clay County ordinances and read it, rather than reading, "We adopt the state food code," and then having to go to a secondary resource to find that state food code.
Any other questions?
So what type of motion do you, do you need to repeal and?
Well, we need a motion to, to repeal the, and I, I gave Ms. Reek the originals there for signature, to repeal two thousand and eleven dash three, Part One, and replace with the six resolutions that will be numbered and signed today.
Well, I make a motion to...
We have to close the hearing first. That's all right. Anybody else that would like to be heard on this issue?
I move to close the hearing.
Motion and a second to close the hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. We need a motion to repeal the...
I was just saying it right away so I could get it right. It was kind of long. I make a motion to repeal the two thousand and eleven dash three, Part One, and re-adopt the, the six remaining.
Six additional.
Additional.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Legislative update.
Paul's not here yet.
Paul's not here.
They're, we're way early.
Early. Well, wait a second, Kent. We'll tell if Paul, if Paul is planning on being here. Okay, we'll wait a little bit there. Okay, let's do some committee reports, then we'll get that done. Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, July seventh, the Ward Planning Commission, general business. We approved a final plat approval of the Morehead Industrial Park off Twelfth Avenue, approved a preliminary plat at Horizon Shores, and also a zoning residential change. Approved a preliminary plat approval in the Stonehill Estates along with some right-of-way easements. And these will be sent on with our recommendation to approve to the city council. On Wednesday, July eighth, Campus Improvement Committee, have a lot of things down here for that. However, Joe presented it, and we passed it with the motion, and it had gone through committee. Frank might have something he wanted to add to that, too. Thursday, July ninth, Soil and Water Conservation District meeting is Jenny's alternate. General business, there was a thorough treasures report. There are just over one half of the fiscal year and have expanded about fifty percent of their budget, so they are in very good shape. There was an extensive report by Sharon Lean, the district conservationist of the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is a federal program. And this lady really knows her stuff. A legislative report on what is called a buffer initiative. This was through the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources. I have a copy of the report, which I have given to Jenny. If you would like a copy, please let her know. Then there were general items, updates, grants, and upcoming events, official reports. On Friday, July tenth, the Lake Agassia Regional Library for the Northern Lights Library Network, an executive meeting to go over the year-end budget and the recent legislative committee meeting that was held in St. Cloud. This included nearly all multi-type and regional library directors. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Frank?
Tuesday, Metro Congress Executive Committee meeting. Went through the United Plan Work Program. And since the Transportation Committee hadn't gone through that yet, we advised that they be sent back to the Transportation Committee to review that. Wednesday, the Building Committee, other than the tower project that we've already discussed, we did discuss where some of the funds, I mean, if you work on that, if we do some work on the family service center, where does that money come from? It's going to come from the family service center budget, you know? Which is going to come from capital improvement, and what's going to come from family service center? So we had some discussion on that. Thursday, they kind of fair, we had Government Day out there, and Jenny and I were out there along with Highway Department was out there, Recycling was out there, and had some fairly good turnout there. And Senator Ekin and Representative Paul Margaret were out there with us for a while, too. So good day out there at the fair, nice and warm. Sunday, the Ice Cream Social, Jenny and I dished out some ice cream out there for the four-H there. Served a lot of people there. Yesterday, the Heartland Trail, again, just discussion on which section of the Heartland Trail we want to do. Is it the Buffalo, the Hot, to Holly? Is it from, or should we start out from Morehead to the Buffalo? Lot of discussion there. They're looking at hiring a consultant to see what is really going to be needed, you know? If, can this trail be built, you know? What's going to be involved? Do we have to buy land? Do we have to, is, are the farmers willing to sell their land, you know? And so, so we're looking at hiring a consultant to find out some of this information. Those are the meetings I have.
Thank you. Jenny?
Last Tuesday, I went to Holly Township to let them know of the location stipend that we approved last Tuesday and also present them with their annual five thousand dollar check. They were absolutely thrilled and wanted me to thank you and let you know how much they appreciate it. I had the Food Systems Advisory, CASC Clay Food Systems Advisory Commission meeting on Wednesday. And because we're still, that's still a new committee, we're still trying to figure out which direction we want to go. One area that we've pointed out is something that we really want to start talking about is community gardens. And, and how do, if we don't have it in our ordinances, how do we go about supporting it if we don't really have it in ordinances? So it's probably going to have to come to us at some point to develop some sort of verbiage to encourage that. I also had, was, like Frank said, was out at Government Day at the fair. And the people that were out there really were appreciative of, of having representatives from the county out there. I think we definitely can expand on that for next year. Because it is such a, a public event, it's, it's good to have as many people out there as possible. I was asked by Dale Rowley to help award the Senior Citizen of the Year Award on Sunday afternoon. Miss, Mrs. Scheffler from Barnesville and Mr. Bortonum from Holly were this year's award winners, and they'll represent Clay County at the, the state fair. So we appreciate all the work that they do and continue to do in our county. And like Frank said, the Extension Committee served up some... And like Frank said, the Extension Committee served up some excellent ice cream in the heat on Sunday. That's the rest of my-
Thank you. Kevin?
On Tuesday, we had a insurance advisory committee meeting, and the primary focus on that was getting ready for the open enrollment and potential policy changes, and we had a presentation given to us regarding Sanford Health Blue Connect option, which after hearing the discussions on it, we unanimously as a committee rejected that as a potential plan for our employees. Just very briefly, what it did is it restricted, it would be a plan that would restrict all of our employees to just Sanford and Sanford affiliates for their health care. And if they went outside of network for a family, their out-of-pocket would go up to forty thousand dollars per year. It obviously was just not worth it. There, it, of course, it obviously came with a, with a beneficial savings from a premium standpoint, that's why they were offering it. But of the four plans that we had, we could tie that Blue Connect to any one of those four. But if you tie, no matter which one you tie it to, all four of those plans, we have some of our employees who use Essentia and some use Sanford. And we'd basically be saying, if you use Essentia now, you're out of network, and therefore none of these coverages apply to you, and you're going to, so it, we, it was unanimously rejected, but I'm glad the committee and our staff brought it up. We're, we are quite concerned about what we're going to be seeing for health insurance rate increases coming up, we should know in, in August. So, and that's, that was primarily, we did receive some updates on life insurance options, too, and, and we've elected to stay with what we currently have. Then on the eighth, I had the diversion public outreach meeting and, and, you know, the, we have the, had the typical report on the land surveying that's going on. In addition to that, we heard reports from the business community and the realtors, and they told us that they were going to be getting much more active and actively involved with this project to make sure that it continues to move forward. Then on Thursday, I was on my way to the diversion authority meeting, and my temporary crown had fallen out, and I had called the dentist, and lo and behold, they got me in there at three thirty, which was the time of the diversion authority meetings, so I ended up missing the meeting. So we'll have to count on Brian to give that report. I met him outside of City Hall long enough to get some paperwork from him. Needless to say, my crown fell out again last night, so I'm sitting here today in the same situation. But my permanent one is Wednesday. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I was also at the insurance meeting, and Kevin said we decided to stay with the life insurance, that's true, however, we are going to take another look at it, we agreed to, after the insurance courts come in.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I guess, and a follow-up on that, there was some discussion, we've had the same face value of life insurance for all of our employees for a long time, and that being ten thousand, and so there was some question whether that should be raised, and we, we all just said that until we know how much it's going to cost to, for the health insurance, we should wait. So, thank you.
Okay, the only thing I had is Heartland Trail, and Frank already reported on that, so Brian, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The insurance committee, I attended that as well, and that has been covered quite, quite well. Campus Improvement Meeting, we held, we had a good discussion on that, that's been covered real well as well. And I think it's, I don't know, it just, it was a good sense to, and I know Joe, after the meeting, told me, too, he appreciated having a meeting like that so he could sound off different projects and see what the commission is interested in pursuing and, and the major cost to this. This infrastructure that we have, you know, we have a, we have a huge campus here, and these projects cost a lot of money to keep things up, they're at the age where they need continuous attention, so I think it's very important that we do that. We had managers' meeting last Thursday, talked some, what about the budget, had a little training session and things, so. And Jenny, Rajah, Assistant County Commissioner, and I met, referenced our home buyouts and looking at putting together some paperwork there. We'll be discussing that later on this morning in our closed session, and then hopefully taking some action when we open. Had a couple, couple meetings with some home buyer clients, so moving forward, we'll talk about that. I attended the land management meeting on Thursday of the diversion authority, and not real any hot topic to report on there. I guess things are pretty much status quo in regards to purchasing or designing or, or layouts and things along those lines. Nothing really, really new to report on that. The, the diversion meeting itself, though, I attended that as well, and we've already reported today and had a discussion in regards to Clay County's part in that particular meeting and the authorization that was given. But they also talked a lot about the in-town levees that are being built and the pump stations and, and the homes and, and discussion in regards to the Oxbow construction area. They are going to complete the homes that are under construction, but no new additional homes will be started under the diversion authority at this time. There was a proposal, and it passed, to set aside the dollars, some of the, of the builders are concerned, and they wanted an escrow account set aside so that that could be paid for. And one question was asked, and I think it's relevant, does this guarantee that the money will be available, or can a federal judge freeze those dollars for payments and things? And of course, anything is possible, and that was pointed out by legal advisor, that just setting an escrow account aside will not guarantee the payment of it any more than, than that. So there was quite a bit of a discussion in regards to that, so I think that's about it, far as our concerns on the diversion meeting. And then yesterday, we had a luncheon meeting with an engineering firm that just wanted to let us know that they were-
Architects.
What's that?
Architects.
Well, it's, yeah, it's architect and engineering firm.
For what?
Oh, for the different projects that the counties, having come up, they just wanted to introduce themselves to, to, I think, you know, the concern was the jail and, and the law enforcement center, and also the-
Transfer.
Transfer station and different projects that we have. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Kevin?
Mr. Chair, I want to go back to a discussion that we had last week that Commissioner Gross brought up regarding the, the committee that was established to look at the health concerns regarding the jail, and then he, he was wondering why, why the heating, the solar was part of that same committee, which he made a very valid point there. And I guess what I would like to see us do is, Joe Wilson has not been involved with our building committee, jail committee, and I would like to include him as part, I mean, he's our facilities manager, he, he should be part of the planning process, and I would like to see, Brian, I'd like to see Joe be a part of this, and, and maybe we could ask that he kind of also focus on researching the solar aspect on behalf of the county as part of this process, and then the two of you could more focus on that health, if that makes sense. I, I don't know that we should set up an, an entire another committee just for the solar part, I guess is what I'm getting at. I, I don't know that that would require its own special committee, but I think by adding Joe Wilson to our, our building planning committee would be-
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Good for us to do.
Brian, you'll take care of that.
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair, you can certainly add him, but what we do have is a lot of different staff that, I mean, from, from Tim Denton in IT and Mark Sloan in Information Services and Laurie, of course, in the financial aspect, Joe in the mechanical aspect of highway department and the engineering. And, you know, how do you want to handle that? Do you want to add him as a member of the committee, or, because then you're going to add, you're going to have, you're going to be times that every one of those people are needed, and we've, we've been keeping and informed of what the topic is.
Well, I think since we're building something, it's probably right to have him on that. The others, I guess, would be, you know, when we have an issue where we need their expertise, we would call on them to assist.
Joe, Joe still brings the perspective of IT and everything. I mean, there's certain times when we're going to want IT there, and, and like you said, health and all these other, but on a day-to-day basis, and, and when the thing is constructed, Joe is still going to be the one who's going to be in charge of, of making sure everything works. And I guess I, I would like to see him be part of the committee.
I guess my concern, I see the need to have him on it, would be assigning him to research it, because I know all of our department heads have a lot on their plate anyway, and so is it important that he researches it, or is it important that he stays abreast and knowledgeable about it?
Well, I think you guys can discuss that, you've got a subcommittee to deal with that.
So he's on that subcommittee? I mean, I'm trying to-
No, I want to-
You're talking about him being on the, on the main committee.
Main committee.
Okay.
I think the solar is a pretty important, excuse me.
No, Brian.
I, I think the solar is an important part, you know, I think we had a little discussion on, you know, probably there's some rebates or something, you know, from some of these companies, or Excel or whatever, you know, doing some of this solar stuff. So I think that should be on the initial planning of the thing, you know, and that, and I think it's a very good idea to get Joe on that, you know, should be involved in that, and he's in charge of that.
Yeah, and I, and I, I think at the same time, when you talk about, you know, the planning, our, our county administrator is also spending an awful lot of time on this and doing research, and, and part of it goes, Jenny, to what you brought up about the solar, and, and I think all of us collectively together as a committee are going to have to designate the time to research these components. Even yesterday, we had a discussion with these architects about solar energy, and they said the vast majority of their clients just reject it as an option because the upfront costs of it are so significant. But if we can go in and we can deal with Excel Energy and those places, and they're willing to, to upfront that initial investment, then it would be in our best interest. And I think Brian's also capable of doing some of that, and has been working on it, so.
And I, I agree. What I was trying to say is I don't feel like, Frank and I have talked about this, and, and the solar is such a huge part, I just don't want to assign that huge part to one person. So my concern is that, that it is being addressed, and it is being added into the plan because it's a viable option.
We definitely will have it as.
Okay, Brian, you'll talk to Joe, and I'll-
You got you.
Okay, let's move on to our legislative update. Come on up, Jim. Morning, Kent, Ben.
Good morning.
Thanks for being here. Well, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Updating us.
Bring some money.
Right to the boarding.
Let's go with that, you had that set down.
Well, we're done, so we finished our special session, that's the, that's the good news. And the, we actually finished everything up before the end of session as far as all the major budget bills, but three of those major budget bills were vetoed, and that's why we came back for the special session. And I, I think it was a mixed bag, as far as, I think that there was a lot of, there were a number of good bipartisan accomplishments that came out of this session. That includes the, the funding for the nursing homes is what I would say is probably the biggest accomplishment that came out of, out of the session, and that was a thirty percent increase, if you look statewide, but it's more in our area because what we did was we compressed the rates so that the, brought the rural and the deep rural, the greater Minnesota nursing homes up closer to what the metro rates are. So it was especially beneficial for greater Minnesota, and, and it was a long time coming. Our nursing homes have been, have been terribly underfunded, so that was a major accomplishment, in my view. We made some accomplishments also on environmental regulations. I did carry legislation dealing with the PCA Pollution Control Agency, which I do feel there needs to be some reform in the, the regulation and the rulemaking process. I have one example that I use is what's happened in Moorhead, where they're requiring a one milligram per liter phosphorus emission into the Red River, and they were requiring an upgrade in the water treatment facilities, it would cost about ten million dollars, while Fargo's dumping in three times as much phosphorus right now as what we are. It doesn't seem to make any sense, and I think that we got the message across to the PCA, we didn't get quite as much as what we were hoping for in the law. We were basically providing for the Red River Basin Commission to develop comprehensive basin-wide strategy, and that everything would be put on hold until that strategy had been put in place or had been implemented and, and made. They wouldn't go for that, but I think they started to see that it didn't make much sense to be requiring this on Moorhead when Fargo doesn't have any such requirements, that you need to do it on a basin-wide basis. That's just common sense. And I use the analogy of building a dam, saying it'd be like building a half a dam, you know, just doing it on the Minnesota side of the river, you need to do it from both sides. So, so I, I think that there's, there were some accomplishments made there. We do have now pressure on the MPCA that we put in law that will pressure them to do more independent peer reviews for large or costly rules that are being implemented, and I think that that's important as well, and also cost analysis that they have to do now, so that we know how much these projects are going to cost and take that into consideration. We made some accomplishments in agriculture, the farm business management program, we were able to get a couple million dollars more put into that program, which is especially important for the farmers in our area, especially now when the farm economy's been moving in a downward direction. Those farm business management programs are even more important. Higher education, we were able to invest more into higher education, another hundred and sixty-six million, lion's share of that went to Mins-, went to the Minskew Institutions, which is, again, especially beneficial for our area, of M-State and MSUM, and, and it benefits more the greater Minnesota areas. The Minskew Institutions serve more greater Minnesota than the University of Minnesota. University of Minnesota wasn't very happy because they felt that they were short-changed, I think we had a hundred and seven million of that, a hundred and sixty-six that went to, to Minskew. But they did get more funding for their medical facilities, medical research facilities, which was very important to them. And as far as education's concerned, we got a two percent, two percent on the formula, which was, I think, important, so the K-12 schools, M-12 schools aren't going to have to be cutting back, that's enough to cover the inflationary increases. We put more into early childhood. On the bonding bill, we got the flood mitigation, that wouldn't happen if it wasn't for the special session, so that was one of the good things that came out of the special session. So we'll be able to finish up Oakport and other flood mitigation projects in the Red River Valley. Now, the bad part of what happened in session was things that didn't get done, and that includes the tax bill and the transportation bill. Those two were actually tied together. The Senate Majority Leader, Senator Bach, had made an offer to the Speaker that for every one dollar in tax cuts that the Speaker wanted, by the way, those tax cuts did disproportionately go more to the metro area down in the Twin Cities. But he said he would give one dollar of tax cuts, and for every one dollar that we could put into our roads and bridges through the gas tax. But the Speaker said that they weren't willing to consider even one cent increase in, in the gas tax. The gas tax does disproportionately benefit the rural areas and the greater Minnesota areas because we get back more than what we pay in, in the gas tax. And it was, I always point out, too, that here in our area, Moorhead and Delworth would not pay any increase in gas tax because there's the Mozone that's, that's in place, which, which protects those communities from any gas tax increases there next to a city that has a lower gas tax like Fargo's. So, so actually, over half the people in the district that I represent wouldn't even be paying any increase in that gas tax. So you get all the benefit, pay none of the cost. Gas tax also doesn't apply to farm fuel, and we're an egg-based economy, so that's a major benefit, too, for, for our area. So that was one of the reasons that Senator Bach kind of put that out there and said, okay, we'll give you those tax cuts that you want, that, you know, go more to the metro area, but we won't have a gas tax than it goes more in- we won't have a gas tax than it goes more to the rural areas. And again, the negotiations broke down on that. Still, I'm hopeful that we can get a tax bill next year. I think transportation's difficult because it's always difficult to get people to support any kind of a revenue increase during an election year. But as far as bonding's concerned, I told you the good part, you know, with the flood mitigation, we also had funding in there for solid waste facilities as well, which is important funding. But we did not get the funding for the jail or for the, the underpass here. The governor did have the underpass in his proposal. It's a very expensive endeavor. You need to have a pretty large bonding bill to accommodate such a large request. I'm hoping that we can get that accomplished next year. And next year's the year that we do the big bonding bill. So hopefully we get some accomplishments there. Also, the home and community-based services, we did not have additional funding for that, although we had the nursing homes, the home and community-based services for group homes and for home care services, did not, did not seem increased. And I'm hopeful that we can again address that next year. And I'm carrying legislation for a 5% increase for, for them. So those are some of the things I hope that we address next year. We do have surplus that we're looking at and there was a lot of money that was left on the bottom line that was not expended this year. So that leaves us an opportunity to accomplish some things in the next session beyond just bonding with that additional revenue. And I think we're moving in the right direction. Economy's moving well. You know, the, I think proud of the fact that CNBC, the Cable Business Station in CNBC did rank Minnesota number one as far as its business climate is because our economy is growing and we're doing very well here. And Morehead actually being ranked number one small city in the United States by Yer Walut, that also I think indicates that we are moving in the right direction.
Thanks, Ken.
Yeah, and I think too, the fact that we didn't get a tax bill done this year, I think we do have a very good opportunity next session to get something done considering the returns in revenue have been about 455 million ahead of projection for the last fiscal year. So with the economy improving, with revenue coming in ahead of schedule, I think that points to a good chance that the surplus will continue in that trend and that we'll, we will be able to do some things for probably a better tax bill, even in my opinion, better for greater Minnesota, you know. If we can get more LGA in there, more CPA in there, I think that would be very good. And just a couple of things, I think Senator Ekin had a really good job of touching on the major points and everything that impact us. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out with the Health and Human Services Bill is that there was a $52 million increase for improved child protection measures. 44 million of that will go directly to counties to hire more staff. And so that was a result of the governor's working commission on improving the child, child welfare system in Minnesota. We did have a $2 million rate increase for chemical health programs, $2 million increase for greater Minnesota public health, $63 million increase for mental health services around the state. One thing that I was a little frustrated on with the Health and Human Services Bill is that there were base cuts to the CHIP program. That came up to just over half a million dollars. 571,000 were cut from that program, so that was frustrating in my opinion. But I think, you know, as Senator Ekin had said, as we do still have the budget surplus and all indications point that it will continue, I think the chances for not only a tax bill next session, but also supplemental budget bill, you know, are possible, I think very possible. We will have a pretty short session, probably about 10 weeks or so, 10, 12 weeks. We go in on March 8th and I anticipate the bonding bill to take up the bulk of the work that we do next session. Hopefully that means we'll have a stronger bonding bill, be able to finish the 2021 First Street grade separation that was ranked by MnDOT as a number one priority for improved rail infrastructure around the state. It's, it's very high on the governor's list. He had in his bill that Morehead would get about 34 and a half million for that project because the bonding bill, had it been about 220 million or so versus the 180 million, I think we would have had a better chance for that project this year. But, you know, we're going to have to look at next year, have to keep the push on, look at next year. I think the biggest thing though, the biggest win for us in the district was being able to finish the Oakport project. I think that's good. A lot of folks have been waiting for that for quite a while, so being able to, you know, tell people up in the old, what used to be Oakport Township, now of course a part of the city of Morehead, I think that'll be a big relief for a lot of those folks.
Thanks, Ben. Paul?
Well, first of all, thank you for the invite and I think Senator Ekin and Representative Lee have covered things very well. Just a couple of areas, going back a little bit on the transportation, because I know that's a huge, huge issue for the counties and the states overall. And, you know, back in 1956, overwhelmingly your parents and grandparents approved a constitutional measure by about 82% yes vote to have a constitutionally dedicated revenue source for transportation. And that included a gas tax, a motor vehicle sales tax and the license tab fees. That's, and that's the formula still in place, but 50, that's one year older than I, so 59 years ago, that was in place. And what, what our parents and grandparents realized at the time is that, two things, you needed a dedicated source of revenue for transportation and you needed to keep that dedicated and separate from all other portions of the budget, you know, away from education, away from healthcare, so they weren't competing. And so I still support that. And as Senator Ekin mentioned, the data that comes out from the state, while rural Minnesota pays 50% of what goes into that highway user tax distribution fund through gas tax and motor vehicle sales tax, license tab fee, 50% we pay in. But for local highway roads that come back, that is about 62% of all those funds go to statewide highways. But about 28% come back to townships and counties and cities. And of that amount, 69% goes to rural Minnesota. So we do get more coming back than what we pay in for something like that. And I know when you have a $2 billion surplus and it's going to be, I think going up the next time we do a forecast, it's tough to ask people, and I understand that, that, you know, we're going to raise a gas tax. Why, when you have all this surplus money, you have to raise a gas tax because you have the money? Well, it's in a separate fund. It's in a general fund that goes for education, all these other things. And so we really need to somehow come up with a compromise. You know, there are some that just simply will only do the gas tax and those things and won't consider taking anything out of the general fund. If we could get something moving, I would support, you know, doing both, you know, at least a little of both to try to get something moving. We need to do that. But as Senator Ekin mentioned, in a time of an election year next year, I just, I don't see anything happening on transportation, other than maybe there'll be some debt service things in the bonding bill and that type of thing, but nothing long-term sustaining. On the tax bill, the fact that we didn't have a tax bill, here's the negative sides about that. Number one is there was no property tax relief for farmers for ag land. And we had, in the House, plan was to exempt 50% of the bond debt service on school levies on farmland. So that would take on 50%. I had a bill that would have exempted all of it and I still think that's probably the way to go. And then the state would come in and cover those dollars so it wouldn't shift off to other properties. But, you know, and I appreciate the county organizing those meetings, but we met twice here to talk with farmers in Clay County. You know, what we've seen is property taxes since 2010 have gone from probably $15 an acre into the 40, 50, even higher range. And so it's a huge concern when commodity prices are coming down at the same time. So I, I'm confident we've got $850 million left on the table that we didn't use out of the $2 billion surplus, plus the extra money that's coming in. Now, a third of that extra money by state law will go into our reserves until we get to do 2 billion in reserves and we have 1.3. So, but we'll still have a pretty good chunk. So I, I still think there's going to be some property tax relief next year for farmers. A few of the things that also didn't get done was the county program aid fix for small counties. That formula has two factors and one of the factors is your basically tax wealth, your tax-based wealth. Well, what's, it doesn't affect Clay County, but in like the Norman Counties of the world and the Wilken Counties and the Traverse Counties that have huge amounts of ag land and small populations, what's actually happening is population's going down, but those huge ag lands are going up. So you divide this and it makes them look very, very wealthy. And so they're off the charts on that part of the formula. And so we're trying, and we know those counties are not wealthy counties, you know. Maybe a better deal would be by income. So we didn't get that fix. Also, I know the counties overall wanted to go to kind of be able to just appoint all of the officials other than like the sheriff and the attorney, and that also did not go through. One thing that went through in special session, which was very controversial, mainly because Governor Dayton was a former state auditor, was the ability for now counties, you can now, if you want, have a private company do your audits. You do not have to rely on the state auditor. I was just talking to Mr. Bergen, you use the state still to do that, but now you would not have to. I forget how that worked, but there was kind of a rotational system, but at certain points you had to use the state. I guess the last thing I will mention that hasn't been mentioned are the buffer zones. Governor Dayton initially came out and just kind of put it out there and he was going to do this. And it was not a very effective way to put that proposal out. Senator Ekin and I were doing town meetings right about that time and I think at all 12 town meetings, we heard very good about that one. Not good, but, you know, it was kind of a one-size-fits-all, there's no compensation. So there, there was an agreement reached at the end and basically it does put a lot of responsibility on the soil and water districts now for kind of compliance and working with folks. And the goal is to get a 16 and a half foot buffer, which is actually in state law right now, around all public waters by November of 2018 is kind of one of the things. And it's the soil and water districts that are going to kind of be in charge of working with people to do that. And then, I don't quite understand this overall, but working towards an average, working towards an average of a 50-foot kind of buffer by November of 2017. So I don't know what that all entails, but what, what I think is positive about that is there's flexibility. So it's not this kind of, you know, you got to have this because we all know, you know, if it was all straight lines along ditches, things would be fine, but you've got meandering and, you know, it creates a lot of problems. And there also now is some compensation, I believe, that was in the legacy bill for if there's land that is taken out. So anyway, we'll see how that works, but it is much different than what came out initially, which was not good for farmers. So anyway, with that, thank you for your emphasis.
Thanks, Paul. And thanks to all of you for being at our Hartland Trail meeting yesterday. That's, I always tell everybody, I think the diversion looks pretty easy compared to that. Any questions?
I have a, first I have a comment, then I, I want to go to the Oakport project first, of course. I was telling some folks the other day that after the, at the peak of the flood in 1997, I had Bruce Langness was in my kitchen table and we were trying to draw up a plan to protect Oakport. So what was happening at that time in 1997 would never happen again. And persistence paid off, I guess. And I want to thank the three of you and I certainly cannot forget Keith Langness and Maury Langton for their involvement as well. And Bruce, you've just been tremendous in this and Jerry Van Amberd, the countless meetings that you guys were at over the years. And to see that finally be done and for those properties now to be certified out of the flood plain is just, it's, that is, like you said, Ben, that's probably the best thing that could have happened this year for, for my home area anyway. But, so I want, and then I want to go back to the comment regarding child protection. And we were, as a county, of course, we were very pleased to see that additional funding that goes in to help new hires. Our administrator in charge of that area did have some concern regarding, we had, we saw the need for this and we went out and we hired two new people before this was actually passed. But we hired, we did that with also the assumption or the, you know, because we knew that legislation was moving forward, that they were going to try to get us some help. So there was some concern that because we had already hired these people before this, that they would not qualify for, or we would not qualify for these new funds. But I want to let you know that we as a commission, when we did that, we fully did it with the understanding of what was going on at the legislature and that we certainly hope that those, our actions, even though early, keep in mind that part of what qualifies you for those funds are meeting certain requirements by the state. And to make sure that you stayed within those percentages of, you know, the tests that they do, it basically required us to get those additional people just so we could make sure that we pass all those standards. So just moving forward, I hope if, you know, I think she was, she was somewhat hopeful that, that we would get through that, but in the event that we have difficulties there, we hope that you guys can help us with that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, we were trying to be proactive, so we don't want to be penalized for that because we anticipated that it would all go through and that we would...
Right.
Have it paid care of, so.
We certainly don't want to have counties punished for being proactive and doing the right thing.
Except I wonder about your wisdom when you anticipate a good thing happening from the state legislature. Well, question that.
Oh, why would we go? I don't know.
I think we did have that debate, Paul, when I were deciding, so. Frank, you have?
Yeah, I do want to thank you guys for, I mean, I go to a lot of meetings and you guys always seem to be there with the city meeting, county meeting, you were at the fair. It's just nice to see you guys around. You are really accessible. My question is on nursing homes, you know, why are there so many different categories? You know, you got metro, you got rural, you got deep rural, you know. That deep rural really sounds, you know, I mean, like you're really out there, you know.
Place you don't want to go.
I mean, why, why is it there are different categories? I mean, does it cost more to take care of a person in the, in the metro area than it does here or is this, I mean, I'm sure it probably does. I don't know, but is there some sort of explanation why there's so many different categories?
There is a rationale and I, I come from the deep rural part where the rates are the lowest and it, it started, you know, years ago, they set these base levels and it was to be based on the cost of living, on the cost of providing the care. And the assumption was that it's less costly in the rural, deep rural areas, that it doesn't cost as much to hire people, people work for less. Also, the, the assumption was that the cost of living is lower in the rural areas, which really, the only area where you see it really being lower is in the cost of housing. And housing in the rural areas is not as much of an investment as it is in the metro areas because it doesn't go up in value either. But as far as, you know, many of the other factors, I mean gasoline and food and clothing and so on, it really isn't less expensive in the rural areas, in some cases even more expensive. So I don't think that the rationale holds very well. And the problem with the, the rates is that when they set these base levels, they didn't change them or recalculate them as time moved on and they just simply added percent increases on top of the base that was already there. So if you add a 3% increase on top of the bigger base, they get a bigger bump in the metro and the rural and the deep rural get smaller bumps. And so this disparity just kept growing and growing and growing over the years to where they were wildly out of whack, you know, the, the reimbursements for the rural and the deep rural were way below the cost of actually providing that care. So that's why in the bill this year, it was called a restructuring bill because it was recalculating based on, you know, the base level of those costs and to bring those rural and greater Minnesota nursing homes up to a level that was closer to the metro rates and to compress it down to two rates instead of the three. So that's, that was long, a long time coming and there'd been a lot of talk about that for years, but that's the problem is that the disparities just grew over the years and were never really addressed.
Yeah, it's really getting tough for some of the smaller, deep rural to hire somebody, you know, because the cost of getting someone, you know, I mean, of course it's better, better paid in the bigger areas, you know, so they're having a tough time hiring people and it's just, disparity is just not right.
I also want to thank you for being present. I know we see you at a lot of places and so our gratitude to you for being present and accessible, as Commissioner Gross said. I also want to thank you for advocating for Clay County to secure some dollars for our solid waste projects. I know that was another big, big feat for Clay County to secure. I know that was another big, big feat for Clay County to secure that, those monies, so appreciate it.
Brian?
Yeah, Mr. Chair for May, and Commissioner Mojo just touched on the solid waste and the effort that you guys put forth, and I know our own staff, Kirk Rosenberger's worked really well with MPCA to funnel some dollars, but we have another project, which all three of you are well aware of, that really would really like to have some state help with, and that is the building of a county jail. We just had a presentation this morning from West Central Initiative that talked about our population, our growth, our minority population, our poverty level, and things. And it's, you know, there's a lot of good things sitting next to the Fargo area, but also sometimes we're on the receiving end of it. I know this board has approved some additional deputies for school resource officers, you're seeing the crime, you guys watch the, watch the news and see what's happening. We've had some unfortunate murders here and across the river. Takes a lot, a lot of manpower, womanpower, when they're talking about those. And then also, our jail population just keeps going up and up and up and up, and it's gonna fall on the shoulders of the local taxpayers if we don't get some assistance. And I know you guys are in our court on that, but I just wanted to reemphasize, that's, and the jail alone's gonna be about a $300 million project, and it's really needed, and you're seeing what this metropolitan area is doing, doing to it, and it's tough, it's tough to keep up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. We've been working with Shisago County, as you all are aware of that. We had two bills running, one would've been a direct appropriation from public safety, one would've been a bond appropriation. Both counties were included in the same two bills, so it would've been fifteen to Clay, ten million to Shisago. And I know Bruce Messelt, he's been, you know, down at the Capitol advocating for it, talking to folks, when we can't be there, talking to people, so we're gonna keep the push on for that. I'd much rather see the state pay for that through bond proceeds than have to fall on the local taxpayers through a local sales tax or however we do that, so absolutely, that'll be the first, first push for it.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanna follow up on what Commissioner Mojo said, too, about the solid waste, and on behalf of even the solid waste advisory committee, who have been working hard on that, that was a very positive thing to come out for us, to get that startup funds for the transfer station and all of that work, that was very important. And I just wanted to mention, I was, you know, when you, when you start naming names for thank yous, you're always concerned that you forget somebody, and I have to also give out one additional name, and that's my good friend and former colleague Greg Anderson, for his work on the Oakport project and amount of time that he also spent at the legislature and working with you guys, so I did not wanna leave him out.
Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four-minute break, that's what we're gonna do. Agenda is Buffalo Red Watershed 2014 Annual Report Audit. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning to you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. Thank you for taking a little bit of time on your busy schedule to get a report from the watershed district. It's hard to believe that half a year plus has already gone here in 2015. We have put together the annual report and audit, and, you know, don't expect you to read all of this, but, you know, right now, we're not gonna go through it line by line or anything like that. I'll just touch on some of the highlights, of course, in 2014, your longtime representative, Mr. Kurt Nelson from Humboldt Township north of Barnesville, announced that he wanted to retire, that's thirty-three years he had on the watershed board, and we did recognize him for his service in that regard. Thankful for your appointment, Mr. Mark Anderson, of course, replaced Kurt, came on the board September one, and enjoyable working with Mark, and I truly believe he's doing a great job. 2014, I mean, we ended the year, our audit is in here, you see that we're, we're okay financially, we're probably better than we have been in the last four, five years, which is good news. Looking just briefly at the audit, I think last year we brought in about $6.8 million in funding, and we spent about $6.5. That's the nature of the watershed, what we bring in, we spend. It goes back out the door for projects and programs to benefit the citizens of our district in regards to water, and of course, that involves a lot of different issues. I mean, we talk about water quantity, water quality now has gotten pretty much put firmly in our laps with the whole TMDL process. We're, we know that our water in Buffalo Red does not meet, you know, the state's standards, and as we get these reports done, the next ten years or so is gonna be working with the citizens of Clay County and the other counties within the watershed to educate, inform. We need to get the word out, if people don't know what the quality of their water is, how are we gonna improve it? So, a lot of work to do. 2014, we also got another one of our larger projects completed, that was the Maston Slough restoration, that is a flood control multipurpose project. We wrapped that up late last fall. We did submit that project this spring to the Minnesota Environmental Initiative down in the Twin Cities for consideration in their natural resources category, they're looking for partnerships. What really made that project unique was the fact that we brought in a pretty wide array of federal, state, and local partners. And when I say local partners, not, we need to mention the thirty-four landowners who voluntarily signed an easement, and that took a lot of work, and these projects do go on for a long, long time, and I don't know when we had that first meeting in Ratse, but they were pretty much in general consensus that this is kind of a stupid idea, and you guys should go home. And eight, nine, 10 years later, I have thirty-five easements voluntarily signed. So, it can be done, and it's a lot of work, and there's some lessons to be learned there. It can be done, is truly my motto. This year, of course, got some projects that we're working on, as stated by our congressional representatives here, that are legislative representatives, that Oakport, the funding is there. Plans are to hopefully be opening bids for that around Labor Day. I, you know, this job doesn't come with a crystal ball, so I don't know what kind of fall we're gonna have, how much work will get done this fall. We're really planning to wrap that up by probably, you know, September of next year. That will have to give contractors some room there to work, and weather is going to be a factor. If you're digging a ditch, you know, freezing temperatures, for example, don't bother you too much. When you're putting clay in an embankment for flood control levy, freezing temperatures don't work, so. It will be nice to get that project done, eighteen years in the making, so time to wrap that up, and we can go into full maintenance mode up there, and I think the levy looks nice, what parts of it are done. And of course, the benefit to the residents up in that area, we all know that these flood insurance rates have gone up and up and up, and having that certified levy is a big deal for, for the city of Moorhead and the residents of Oakport Township. The other project we're gonna be wrapping up, hopefully this year, will be Georgetown, and they will have protection then to the hundred-year level, plus three foot of free That'll be nice to see that project come to completion, it's been a whole array of issues there, there have been little delays along the way, but we're getting closer every day. And what we also wanted to talk to you about today a little bit is we continue to discuss our possible membership or rejoining of the Red River Watershed Management Board. And I put this together yesterday, and I shared it with my board last night at their meeting, a little bit of history, you know, about the Red River Watershed Management We were a member from 1981 to 2002, and the sole purpose of the formation of that organization was after the 1975 summer flood, the need to put flood control on the landscape to address these serious flooding problems, and of course, the recognition then, even back in 1975, that these projects were going to cost considerable money to build, and that it made sense that a, an organization be formed where members then would pool their funds, so that when you had a project ready to build, you could come to that resource, to that pool of funds, and get your money back to implement your project. Because, you know, where we're at in the southern end of the Red River Valley, our projects can have multiple benefits all the way up the line. Now, it was mentioned last night, if you build something in Hallock or Oslo right on the border, yes, it still has benefits, but the further south you go, the more benefits they have. You probably know, and you can, I'm not gonna go through all of this line by line, but, you know, the Red Board can levy a tax of .04836 percent, so you, whatever calculations you do, you need to divide them again by a hundred. That is their maximum levy. Last year, since we are not a member, I don't know what their reasoning was, but they did drop that tax down to seventy-five percent. And of course, I think the issue for Buffalo Red River Watershed District right now is, how do we identify that source of funding to put these projects on the landscape? We're currently working on a half dozen projects, some of them in the eight, nine, 10,000 acre-foot We don't have anything right on the front burner that, you know, we're gonna start construction on next year, but we're making progress. And actually getting fairly good landowner reception. They know what the problems are. It was an area we're working west of Barnesville, historically, that's, that has been problematic, those drainage issues and problems and flooding problems in that area go back fifty, sixty, seventy years. We had a meeting with those folks, I think in May, and they said, you're on the right track. We understand what these projects can do. And of course, as you get more of them on the landscape, they actually see what they They're not creating giant lakes, and we're not gonna have walleye fishing west of Barnesville. They're temporary holding areas that can be utilized when we have extreme runoff events to prevent downstream flooding. And these things, these projects are costly to build, I mean, they've used numbers, it was a thousand dollars an acre-foot of storage, now the average they're figuring is closer to $2,000 an acre-foot, meaning a single project that would store eight thousand acre-feet of water would cost you $16 million to build. And of course, we do not have that type of funding available. There are other places you can go, there are federal and state partners you can bring in, but there's always very competitive to get that funding. You know, because you have been a supporter in that regard, that after we got out of the Red Board, there, under watershed law, there is a way to raise some local funding, and with your support, we've been doing that, it's about a million dollars a year. The long and the short of it would be that if we rejoined the Red Board, of course, that source, we wouldn't need that extra source, because with the Red Board, what happens, you bring in the money, half of it you send to them for projects of common benefit to the Red River of the North, the other half you keep locally to fund your own projects, programs, et cetera. So, you know, you kind of replace one tax with another. Just the numbers are coming out of the state auditor's office, the taxable market value right now of the Buffalo Red River Watershed District is $7,856,233,700. So, we are, have a large tax base. We used to say, and the numbers have changed slightly now because of the additional area we've brought in, the city, north half of the city of Breckenridge, the district's been expanded to include the Otter Tail River downstream of Orwell, but about eighty-five percent of that funding come directly out of Clay County. And then we would say, of that eighty-five percent, half of that comes out of the city of Moorhead. So, that's, that's a huge part of our tax base. You turn over that sheet that I just handed out, and you notice I stamped a draft, because this is my take, I did review it with the board, and we'll be working and adding and taking things out, but, you know, what does that tax mean? Well, for a hundred thousand dollars in valuation, the Red Board tax would bring in $48.36. I pulled up just a typical quarter of land in Spring Prairie Township, Clay County, that had a market value of $833,000 or $5,200 an acre, the tax would be $102.84 on a quarter of land. Or that's about $2.50 an acre. And, you know, you just talked with the legislators earlier about taxes have gone from forty, fifty, sixty bucks an acre, and this, this would be in addition, too. In 2015, the watershed tax totaled $1,242, and if we'd have been a Red Board member, and these are approximate numbers, the tax would have been $3,418,000 or about 2.7 times greater. So, it is an addition. I think, you know, when you, and as elected officials, you know that, when, there's times when you say, okay, yeah, we need to raise the taxes, but then you need to have sound reasoning and logic as to why you're doing it. And that's some of the pros and cons that we got into, you know, we wouldn't need a lobbyist anymore, 'cause the Red Board has their own. I, you know, some of these probably should be in bold or something, but it's to identify a funding source for floodwater retention projects. And keeping in mind that they have budgets that the Red Board works with, and, you know, it's gonna take time to be a member of that board, to get on their list, so that when we have a project two, three, five years down the road, that we are, we are on that list, so that we can get back the regional funding to help build it. Obviously, that, and there's been some discord in this regard, but working in unity with the other membership districts, or member districts of the Red Board, you know, united we stand, Region One of the state, which is Red River Valley, has always had a strong voice from a watershed perspective, and it's the unity that the Red Board can provide in that regard. And we have missed out on some funding, because we're not members. And one of them, of course, is through the Red River Retention Authority, or 3RA nicknamed. They got $12 million from the NRCS this last go-around through the Regional Conservation Partnership Program, and when it come time to divvy up those $12 million, of course, the Red Board is co-chair of that 3RA, they said, you're not a member, so you get zero. And I feel that we've probably lost a million dollars in 2015 by not being a member. Other pros, I mean, membership can be evaluated on an annual basis or on an as-needed basis. I said, I don't know, said, we'll see where this goes, you need to have a seat at a table if you're going to make change, influence change. We also have to recognize that other districts, and that would be primarily our neighbor to the south, the Boydysuwa, are doing big projects that do benefit the citizens of Buffalo Red River Watershed District, and we're not contributing in that regard. They have built their North Ottawa Project, that's close to 10,000 acre-feet of storage. They've got another huge project online, even larger than that, which they call Red Path, and we are not contributing to those projects, but yet, clearly, the people in Breckenridge, the people in Moorhead, the people along the river are all benefiting from those. And in, you know, recognition amongst our peers, I mean, we hear it when we go down to the Capitol, the DNR, the Legislature, et cetera, that, well, you're not a part. And if you're gonna go down to St. Paul and testify saying, we need funding for our next big project, I think the question, I know the question they're gonna ask is, are you doing all you can at the local level to make it happen? And the answer to that, without being a member, I think is no. There are always, you know, the other side of the coin, two sides to everything, some of those, of course, obviously, is the landowner costs and taxation, it's a, it's a big deal, it's another deal. And I give those phone calls when those tax statements come out. Recognizing the fact that, well, we have not been a member since 2002, and we just haven't crawled into a hole and, you know, said, well, geez, you guys haven't done anything in the last thirteen, fourteen years, we've been very active, and we've gotten projects built and working on projects. Could we do more had we been a member? Probably the answer is yes. Staff and manager time... Staff and manager time, you're talking another 12 meetings a year. Don't need to talk to you guys about meetings. You, you have plenty, so you know how that is, but more time commitment. And I think realizing that all areas of the Buffalo Red River Watershed District probably don't benefit equally either regarding flood control. We have a couple of counties that obviously sit 3, 4, 5, 600, 700 feet higher than some of the lower areas. And keeping, trying to continue to keep the unity that we've always had in Buffalo Red. There are areas in the valley where they've gotten some, some issues, this lowland, highland feud going, and it really has almost stopped all activity because they're spending more time in court than they are getting projects built. And I've worked very hard over the last 35 years to keep the lid on that can of worms, and I will continue to do so. We don't need a us versus them attitude. Another issue that is of concern is if we were to rejoin the Red Board, we'd probably need to make a decision here in the next 30 days. You could probably say, "Well, why weren't you talking about that six months ago? I can't go back. It's before us now." Maybe we need more time to adequately address this issue. We will be going to all four counties here, hopefully in the next month, to give basically the same presentation and get feedback from those other commissioners as to where they may or may not stand on rejoining the Red Board. And then, of course, what I stated earlier, the need for district-wide support for a decision, you know? Hopefully, if a decision was made and I just, you know, I just work there, these are the people that make those important decisions, that a vote, I would hope, we talked a little bit about last night, would probably be 7-0 to join that. We don't divide the board on a 4-3 vote or something to say, "Well," you know? And when you, if you can't get the unanimous support on it, then maybe we have more work to do regarding education information. So, in the past, I know we've had some meetings with Clay County. I think we know where you stand, although you have some new members on the board. Maybe that's along the lines of information and education, but would kind of like to hear from you today, you know, what your thoughts are in that regard. The need for flood control, you know, has not gone away. Imagine many of you did read the article in the form that came out, I think, last week from the Red River Basin Commission and their director over there, Jeff Lewis. Maybe we've gotten a little complacent. We haven't had a major flood. When we were having them year after year after year, it was on the top of everyone's radar screen. Now, we've went two, three years, and thank God we have without major flooding, but it would somewhat get complacent then in that regard. So, the need has not gone away. That's why we're here, why the Watershed District was really formed in 1976, to control flooding. And we've done some work, and obviously, there's a whole lot more to do. So, questions or comments?
Jenny?
Appreciate you guys coming to us. As one of my appointments, I've been able to attend your meetings to help educate me as a new member of the board, but I'm also on your advisory committee and a group of residents and leaders in the area met. And, and we did talk about this issue, I think extensively. And, and one point that you said that we need to have a seat at the table seemed to really be agreed upon by a lot of people. And, and I realize there are a lot of pros and cons, but it does seem that now is probably a good time to start talking about why, why we maybe need to be back in, in that. Taxation is always a huge issue, and understandably so, but I think there are two points that maybe are of interest to me, is it's something that can be evaluated, and membership doesn't have to be permanent. You can come or leave as you want. And, and if we have projects that need to be done, there will be some sort of taxation that will have to happen to get those projects done. So, if we're looking at a, a list of projects that we feel are vital and, and need to get done, then, then taxation is probably something we're going to have to see anyway. And if we missed out on a million dollars last year, it may be important to, to talk about joining again.
Wayne? You voted 7-0 last night that you would like to do this?
No, we did not have a vote last night, Wayne. We wanted to go to the county boards first and then bring it to a vote.
Consensus among yourselves? Is that what I heard you say?
We didn't even go that far. We had a word member missing, but I think what Bruce was saying is, is that when we get to that point to vote on it, and, you know, I mean, you can't say, we would feel a lot more comfortable if it was 7-0, 6-1, something like that, than 4-3. 4-3 could, you know, I mean, if we have to, we have to, but if, if, I think we would like, if it's going to be 4-3, maybe we need more information, we need to do a little more homework. Like Bruce said, we got, if we're going to get in this year for, for the auditing and all that stuff, we got to get pretty on it. If we're not ready to make the right decision, I would guess we'd rather leave a blank sheet for, you know?
Thank you.
Frank?
You know, as far as with the watershed, you know, to get you acquainted with it, you know, I really appreciate those tours you've been given, and, you know, I've been on a couple of them already. And it really helps a person understand what you guys do. I mean, that is some great work. I mean, if you just talk about the watershed, you don't attend any meetings or anything like that, you really get to wonder, "What are you guys all about?" You know, it's just to get the water out of here, you know? But I appreciate those tours. But I do have a question on Georgetown. You said you've completed that. I know it was a meeting up at Georgetown a couple of months ago that you were at, you know? Are those projects, will Georgetown dike ever be certified because you can't go across 75? Or, I mean, are rates ever going to change up there as far as flood insurance and stuff?
Well, there would be some additional work that would need to be done there, Commissioner Gross, because again, the road closures have not been made, and that's primarily Clay County Road 34 going east towards Felton, and then Trunk Highway 75, both north and south sides of town. And they end up being some pretty huge expenditures. But all of the communities, as you go up Highway 75, Pearly, Hendrum, Halsted, are all dealing with the exact same issue. So, yeah, Highway 75. So, I think that's down the road. Georgetown will be very happy if we can just get the levy done this year, and then they'll have protection. And the way those are intended to work, that if during a major flood, you're going to have to come in and put clay barriers right on the road and close up the dike. But that, that has gotten delayed. We went back, Frank, and met with Georgetown here earlier this month, in July, whatever, the first Monday meeting, and continued to address their concerns and issues. And we just ended up with one house that ended up being in the way, and it was real problematic to, to get that house out of there. In fact, we will be in court here next Thursday, hoping for a judge's decision that we can use condemnation, which the landowners are agreeable to. We got involved with these banks, and they just said, "We can't make this happen. We're trading one house for another house."
Right.
The logistics of it was, we'll just put his mortgage over there, and it's, we have a better deal anyway, and the bank couldn't make that happen.
Okay. I just wondered how that was going. Thank you.
So, on the management board issue, are you looking for what our board want?
Yeah, in general, I mean, and again, we've, Mr. Chair?
We've always supported getting back in there. I think over the years, are we still in agreement on that, that we should be in there? Okay, so that's, as a board, we're in agreement on that.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I think we've, in the past, we've sent letters to your, your watershed board, addressing our concerns as to why we're not members. And I, I too have concern about what it might do to a cost per acre in ag land. At the same point, many of, many of the projects that go on, that you do in the watershed deal in rural areas and deal with ag land, and the ability to properly control that water. And oftentimes, what happens when you do a project, there's a portion that is funded through the million dollars you might get from us, but then there's also special assessments that go on to landowners. Now, I don't know to what extent you might see an increase in cost per acre in terms of being a member of the Regional Water Board on a price per acre, but at some point in time, there might also be reductions to those properties by the monies then coming from a different area. So, and since 1997 and after 2009, we've always, we constantly hear about, "We need to take a regional approach to this process." Yet, we have refused to be part of a regional group. And I, I think that is wrong. And I, I do agree with the, the cons to it. They're, they're appropriate. But having a seat at the table also has a voice in also determining what that levy will be. You know, so it's not like we're going to be stuck with whatever levy that they choose. We're going to have a say in what, you're going to, we're going to have a vote as to what that levy will be to our, to our taxpayers in Clay County as well. Right now, we have none. Of course, we, we don't get any benefit either. We get zero benefit. And you bring up the point about Bruce, about the projects that have gone on, for example, in Wilken County and, and the storage areas that are down there, and it's been a major benefit to our area. And we haven't contributed one nickel to that. And the Red Path is the next, and we should be actively being a part of that process. If we truly want to have long-term flood projects, all of that comes into play. And I would encourage you to support rejoining the Red River Water Board.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Brian, did you have something?
Well, I do. Vicky pointed out to me, and I think it was, we remember hearing about this, but on page 27 of this report, there's a recognition of excellence in conservation, and some individual there was, was awarded the District Employee of the Year by the, by the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources. And I think, I think it's important to recognize Bruce's effort.
Does that mean?
I think it does, yeah.
Yeah, congratulations, Bruce. That's significant. Yeah, very good.
I think, you know, he's looked up to, Bruce is looked up to by all the watershed districts.
Six, six, much more, most people.
You know, maybe they shouldn't have put that on page 27. Maybe they should put it on page one.
Yeah, you don't.
Well, congratulations.
And I would just like to say, if I knew, and thank you for putting me on here. It's a great learning experience, and there's some very fine people on here working with them. They've come getting one of the agency people, and there's a lot of good agency people that we've worked with. We don't always agree on everything, but we look through it, and everybody's really exceptional people on there. So, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Play your presentation. Okay, moving right along.
First lady. How are you?
Good morning.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure for, I think it is anyway, for Laurie and I to be here today to help you folks get started on the 2016-year budget. It's pretty early in the stage yet, but we'll just run over a few things that we've presented here today. And maybe we can just start with the memo, and then we'll talk about some of the addendums or the attachments that we have to this memo. But all of the departments have submitted their worksheets. And I think frankly, all of the outside agencies or entities that asked for county funding have submitted them as well. At least we have inputted figures into the budget of, if we didn't get the formal request yet, we, we took a guesstimate at what their request may be. So, we've done that, and Laurie is compiling a worksheet on that. She has compiled one and printed one, but both she and I are reviewing that now for the obvious, maybe omissions or errors that have been placed into that. So, it's pretty early yet. We have approximately $450,000 in new requests, and they mostly include additional people. And I, I realized when I was putting this together that FTE means full-time equivalent, but it's an employee. And the reason why you refer to that terminology, because it might be two half-time employees or something along those lines. So, it's, that's what it means. So, Motor Vehicle is asking for another employee in the Drivers License Division. County Attorney, you approved a Assistant County Attorney last year, and they now are asking for a support staff for the county attorney's office. Their workload is just, keeps increasing and increasing, as you are well aware of. You have to be a rocket scientist to realize the load that's being put on them. You just watch the news, I guess. The Sheriff's Office, they are requesting one full-time deputy, and then all the equipment that goes along with that, when you start talking about vehicles and uniforms and training and...
Just to cover that street crime position?
I believe, yeah, I believe it is. I can't say for certain because I haven't talked to them specifically. This was a few months ago when we talked about would they put in a request for the street crimes. So, they'll address that when Laurie and I meet with them, and then I'm sure when they, when they address the board as well. And Corrections is putting in for one full-time employee as well. I have not discussed that with Julie yet as to what that is, so I don't have any additional information about it. Technology Services, I know other years, he has asked for an additional employee, and this year, a month or two ago, we did talk about him adding some overtime dollars in his budget rather than asking for an employee to cover some of those special assignments that they do. Social Services is asking for an additional half-time for, and additional dollars of out-of-home placements, and that's substantial. It'd be about $150,000. But right now, you budget about $2 million a year for out-of-home placements, and there's been a lot of out-of-home placements. So, Rhonda will talk about that too, but that, that added a lot to the addition of , of new requests. We thought it was substantial enough that it'll be a new request. Other items that Laurie and I have talked about, of course, is that 2% cost of living adjustment, which is in many of the union contracts already that have been approved, will be in there for your consideration. Insurance increase this year. Last year, I think it was $446,000, at a 13% increase. So, Laurie's plugging in a figure of $500,000 this year to the budget.
Is that what it was last year?
446, or 443, what's that?
I thought it was more than that it ended up being last year.
Yeah.
It was more than we had put in the budget originally.
Yeah.
Yep.
It could be more than 500,000, too.
It could be.
It could. It could. We just...
There's no way of knowing.
No, no. We'd grab a figure out of the air until it gets...
One other question.
Yeah.
One other question, Mr. Chair. The next one, county program aide, is that for sure, or is that a guess?
That, that was last year's number.
Okay, so you're putting that down for this year?
Well, so far. We'll get notified in August as well.
So, that could, could that be lower?
Could go up a little bit. I'm guessing it'll go up a little bit.
Thank you very much.
And so far, and of course, you haven't got these figures to you yet, but that MCIT dividend, you know, when they were here and presented, we don't know where that is going to be... But we're going to put some dollars in there this year for your consideration, and then we'll see where the discussion goes with it. And then, that brings us to, and we've got some other things. Maybe I'll go on to the other things before we come back to the discussion of how to handle the presentations and things. But what you have, then, on the attachments that are stapled together, the first page is the estimated market value growth in the county. You'll see that we have about six billion dollars' worth of value in the county. And last year, in twenty fif- or fifteen, I believe this is considered, yes, the growth has been the largest it has been for a little while, and that is one point eight six, so it's approaching two percent of, of growth, which is really, really favorable. And then the overall valuations last year, I think, increased five percent, and you're seeing this year, it's only one point zero four percent, or eight or one percent. And you're seeing that the ag land has leveled off and probably even started a little decrease, and I'm sure that accounts for a big part of that with that time period. So, if you have any questions on that, certainly we'll ask. And then the second page is just kind of a history of the levy.
I was going to, the, the growth for new construction, what was it last year? Is that what?
One point four, I believe.
So, it's a little higher than what it was?
This is higher, again, yeah. Yeah, which is a positive, very positive count. And then the county history levy, and, you know, it's been pretty consistent the last few years, just staying in that three to four range. I think we're just pretty darn good. And then the third page is one that's always of interest, and Laurie and I talked about this yesterday, and she assures me that there's been some adjustments and things, but this is, you received one back about two, three months ago as well, of what the fund balances were and things. And I know this comes into play with our budgeting process of what we're spending and what we're taking in. So, I guess you saw it, like I said, you saw it a couple of months ago, but it's pretty stagnant with it, but looking pretty good in regards to, to those. Now, this is the end of the year, end of twenty fourteen. It's not what's happening the first six months of this year. That's for your information as we move forward. And then the last two pages is something that I've supplied for a few years. It doesn't really have a lot to do with our budgeting process, but this comes out of the state auditor's office. And the most current information, of course, is for twenty thirteen up there, you'll see in the block, but just comparing it with twenty twelve, and the, you'll see our tax capacity went up just a little bit to seven hundred and fifty-six dollars per capita, and our net tax levy that we assess per capita is four hundred and one dollars. Now, you'll see next to there is, it says seventy-seven out of eighty-seven. There's eighty-seven counties, and we are seventy-seven in taxing per capita, which is, of course, near the bottom. We're certainly not at the top. But we slipped a couple positions there from seventy-nine to seventy-seven. And that's kind of the way the whole chart goes through. And, you know, this is, I guess, what they say is, the, the information that you extract is only as good as the information that you input. And I don't, I don't know how accurate on-spot this is, because when you talk about public health, it says that we expend zero, and that's not true. We do expend about seven hundred to eight hundred thousand is the request this year from county funds. So, and that says zero. So, that doesn't get inputted in any system there. But I think overall, we can look at what the per capita cost per taxpayer is. So, that's just some information.
Charges for services, we're the lowest?
And we're very low on charges for services. And I know we've had discussions about that.
The lowest according to this?
Is that the lowest according to this? Yeah, I know, I know we're very low, and, you know, that's like zoning fees and other fees. The, the food inspection is kind of a separate deal, you know, we charge the state rate there now, and so. So, what this is very, very early on, and this is just giving you an idea of what paperwork we're putting together and what discussions we have had. Now, in the past, Laurie and I have met with each of the departments to review their budgets a lot for accuracy, but also we do question them on their increases or if they've funded things properly. And I guess we're looking for some feedback from you, if you guys want us to continue to hold those meetings with those departments. And then what, do you want all the departments to come in here? We'll start out with the ones that have new requests, like we have in the past. And of course, you always want to hear from the big budgets, but do you want to hear from them all? Do you want to hear from all of the departments that you send money to, like cultural diversity, I think it's around five thousand dollars, and some of those, you haven't heard from those during the budget process? I mean, how, how lengthy of a process do you want to engage here? Frank, go ahead.
Well, I guess my first, you know, looking at the past couple of years that I've been on this, you know, you hear about these presentations coming in here and stuff like that, you know? And I don't know, I guess, I feel as a commission, we say, "Well, I look at the new growth here" and stuff like that, you know, "That's already figuring out to be two point nine percent." You know, "If I look at the new growth and the overall market-driven," you know? If we, as a commission, say, "You can go up to four percent," you know, "Figure it out how it's going to work out." You know, I don't know whether we are in a capacity that we can say, "No, you don't need a new vehicle. You don't need a new, a new officer. You don't need new this," you know? I guess what I'd also like to see, you know, I mean, right now, I've seen, "I need this, I need this, I need this," you know? I, I never see any savings, you know? Is any department coming saying, "You know, we're going to save so much money this year." You know what? You know, I don't know if we ever see that, you know? And sometimes I would like to see some of that, you know? But personally, as a, as a commissioner, I feel like I'll set the, I'll set it at four percent and figure it out, how are you going to get there? You know? I, I don't know, some of my feelings, you know? All these presentations, I, I don't know what to tell people when they say, you kind of, they come in there and say, "I need an officer or another employee." I can't say you don't need them. You know? Unless you come to me and say, "I'm going to save, do some savings here," or something like that, you know? What am I comfortable in allowing this year for an increase? So, if you're saying you're almost going to have a three percent in just growth, you know, if we add one percent of that, I say, "Let's go with four percent and stay, stay within that." I mean, I don't know.
The needs are one issue, and what we can afford is another issue. So, we have to look at those, and, you know, have to take it all in, take it all in, and then try and determine what we can afford and what we can't, and that's where we move on from, so.
I, I think every year, you can have different things that can cause you to maybe look at things in a different way. For example, Laurie's got five hundred thousand health insurance. What if that's seven hundred and fifty or a million? And then you say you're restricted to four percent? But at some point in time, I, I, quite frankly, I, I like the presentations, and I like them not only for me, but I like them for the general public who sits and watches this. It's, it, this is an open forum for all of our constituents in our county to hear the needs.
May be helpful for Jenny this year, too, since it's her first year, so it's, she should have to sit through that at least one year, so.
And I, well, I just think it's good every year.
Okay. I'm assuming Mr. Chair and we'll communicate on a regular basis with this. Do, would you like Laurie and I to go through with the departments before they come into the board meeting? Okay.
If you think it's beneficial, it seems to me that it's beneficial.
Yeah, I think so.
Then you can work out some pieces before you come to us, and I think those are, are good conversations to have.
You should know, they're going to present to us at a board meeting, to go through your-
Yeah, I think if we do that, we'll get, at least by the time we have the presentation, we'll be back to some reality about where we're really at, so it's-
You think this is a reality now?
Well, I see. Well, I think what Mr. Gross's comments are, are well-taken as well. That gives us a framework of, and if you look at the history of it, I know last year, you guys said, "No, we're not going to that six or seven. We're going to use reserves, or we're going to do this, or we're going to do that." We feel that the program is important, but we're going to use some other mechanisms. So, I think having that guideline and, and structure for the departments gives us support when we sit down and say, "You know, you're asking for six percent in this area, and that's not going to happen." So, it, it helps us, give us a little support in regards to that, so.
And I, and I might add, too, and I, and I think we need to take caution into the, that we can use all of the new construction as a way to not have an increase in levy, because you've got to remember that a portion of that new construction, we're committed to rebating some of those tax dollars back for the new construction that has occurred, that becomes an expense line item in our budget. And so, for us to say we have a one point eight six, or a two percent, or two and a half percent in new construction, that doesn't mean that's all money for us to, right, Laurie? I mean, because, because we do have, we committed to, as an incentive to get that new construction, to pay some of that back to those people to get them to build and to move here.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close the session.
Second. All right. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say goodbye by saying aye. Oh, same, same. Motion carries. Okay, Brian, what do you got? So- Well, okay. Are we writing offers to them, though? I guess that's, that's where I'm confused.
Okay.
But we'll write them and bring them back.
No, we're going to, where you, so you can tell them this is what the offer is, and Jenny will work on writing up the written ones, and they'll be back here next Tuesday with the written all ready to go. All they'll have to do is sign it after you, you know? But, but now you'll know that you can tell them this is what the board agreed to as the ten percent plus the closing costs, and so this is what the offer will be, so. And then you'll bring it to them in writing next, the beginning of the next week, right after our meeting, they can have it, so. Is that what we, where we're at? Kevin, you okay with that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it. Are we, are we on or not?
Yes, yeah, we are.
I'm, I'm okay with it, with, with the understanding that we're approving the ten percent and, and, but I, I, I think we need a week, and I think they need to also be told that the final, the final stipulations haven't been done yet. You know, if you're going to do it this week, and that, you know, I think the board's going to have to take a position as to how we're going to treat everybody equally. And we might have people now who are willing to do things that future ones might not be willing to do.
Well, but, see, I, I, you know, I mean, everybody's going to have, some people want out, you know, are, are interested immediately, and some may not be. So, the real issue is, you know, what, how do we address the, you know, those that want some extended time? And I think that's what you're going to have to help us determine how we go about that, so.
What, what is your motion? Can I have your motion, or can we, can I make that motion that he asked?
Well-
You know, I, I, I realize, but, you know, these people are hired to do a job, and I got a feeling they're going to do the best job they can, you know?
Yeah.
To the best interests, you know? We have to second-guess what they're going to do. I mean, they're definitely going to make a offer and cover all the bases that need to be covered. We have lawyers, we've got accounting administrators, we've got planners, and now we're going to tell them how to do their job properly. And I just, I mean, I'm willing to make a motion that they proceed to-
Read your motion there, if that's what you want to do, Frank.
"In respect to the purchase of the properties north of the county campus, I move the county board to adopt the home buyout policy of paying ten percent over a raised amount of the residence and to pay all closing costs of transaction. We further authorize Brian Berger, Tim Magnuson, to be authorized selling agents on behalf of the county." And I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Vicki, you want to call the rule?
Campbell.
No.
Gross.
Yes.
Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mochum. Yes. Waylon.
No. Motion passes. Okay. Oh, no other business today? Good journey.